I, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Not a moment too soon. Thanks.
Item three, all are present. Item four.
Make a motion to recess commissioner's meeting open salary board. I'll second that.
Question by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item four, recess commissioner's meeting open salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
Item four, all are present. Item three.
Make a motion to approve minutes from September 14th. I'll second that.
Question by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item three on the agenda, approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item four.
I make a motion to approve item number four on the agenda. I'll second that.
Question by Christian Arnold, second by Christian Warren. To approve item four on the agenda. amend the full-time non-union position of Director of Human Resources to Director of Human Resources/Deputy Chief Clerk. Salary benefits remain the same. Changes required provide the signatory ability for fiduciary administrative requirement and so on. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number five with the addition of a minimum of 40 hours per week. I'll second that.
Question by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item five, set the starting salary range for the open full-time non-union position, Chief Clerk to $62,500 per year. Six-month probation period benefits according to county policy manual and government mandated requirements. Minimum 40 hours per week. Questions or comments? Yes.
And who is the Chief Clerk right now?
We have none.
I thought Mr. Stoudt was.
He is the Deputy Chief Clerk.
So right now you don't. Who was the previous Chief?
It was Mr. Stoudt.
So he became Deputy?
Yes.
And now you're looking for a Chief?
Yes.
So you haven't hired one yet?
Yeah. It's in the commissioner's meetings. When we get to that, you'll see it in there.
Okay. But I'm just asking the salary, $62,500. Is that the salary that was before?
Pretty, yeah. It was. Actually, it was higher.
It was higher than $62,500?
Right. That person also had other duties.
Oh, other duties, right. But isn't that kind of close to your county commissioner's salary?
Actually, it's quite higher than our county commissioner's. If you remember, we froze all the elected official salaries, including the county commissioners, have been frozen for, I believe, it's six years.
So then what is your salaries compared to this?
Like $54,000.
How come the Chief Clerk is higher than the commissioner?
No, because that person, if they're doing their duty, should be, is hopefully going to be a lot busier than the commissioners there.
So that makes sense to you, I guess?
Absolutely.
It does?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To create the full-time non-union position Administrative Assistant to Chief Clerk, run 40 hours per week, salary $32,000 a year, six-month probation, benefits to the government mandated requirements. Questions or comments?
So who's the Administrative Assistant to Chief Clerk now?
There isn't one right now. There was one, but that one is gone.
That one is gone?
Yes.
And is that, who was the one that left?
That was, Maggie McNamara was the second deputy in the Administrative Assistant.
So Maggie McNamara left?
She took a different position.
So she's still in the county, you mean?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item seven, to create the full-time non-union position of Information Technology Technician, 40 hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item eight on the agenda. Create temporary full-time non-union position of Courthouse Security Officer. One delegate. Questions or comments?
How many security officers do you have right now?
None.
This is a new position?
This is a new position.
Besides all the sheriffs you have on the, in the courthouse, you're adding a security officer?
This is only for 90 days during the construction period.
Oh. And where's he going to be situated?
That's up to the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board? Yes.
Can we go back to motion number six, please? There is the Administrative Assistant to the Chief Clerk. 40 hours per week, salary $32,000 per year. Is there an hourly wage attached to that because?
No. It's still salary.
And how will that position then be affected from December 1st?
They'll get paid for overtime. You can still have salary people that still get paid for overtime. I think it's having probably $148,000.
Yeah, it's $47,000 change.
Right. We get paid overtime if they work overtime.
But then would there be an hourly?
Well, then you take the yearly rate divided by the 2180 hours. Then you have an hourly rate. Any other public comment on the salary board? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To adjourn the salary board. All in favor?
Aye. Item six.
So adjourned. Item number five.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
You will notice in September 14th minutes there are now bullet points as to the public discussion. Item number six.
Make a motion to approve item number six with the change of the last one, the EFTPS payment that states 9/7/2016 is to be 9/21/2016. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item six with the following change of the EFTPS payment for 9/7, change to 9/21/16. Questions or comments?
And what is PASC D U?
It's the Unemployment Conference Station. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item seven on the agenda. Questions or comments?
What is mandatory clean updates and training? Is that with assessment? What's clean and green? What is C O E A N?
It has to do with security and 911.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item eight on the agenda. To ratify and approve the transfer of Christopher Zawiski to the part-time corrections to the open full-time corrections. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item nine on the agenda. To ratify and approve the transfer of Eric Hope Line Montrose from Corrections Office to open full-time position. I think it should be part-time. From part-time Corrections Office to the open full-time position of Corrections Office. Do you want to amend your motion?
Is he going from part-time Sergeant? I mean, he's going from Corrections Officer to Sergeant?
Oh, from full-time Corrections to Sergeant. You're correct. All right. My mistake. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 10. Correction of, to ratify and approve the hiring of Jeremy Shiptowski. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve and ratify, to ratify and approve the hiring of Jerry Shiptowski of New Milford to the open part-time position of Corrections Office. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 to the open position of First Deputy Clerk of Courts.
Is that right?
Yes, Amanda Landen is Clerk of Courts.
Right.
So you're changing what? You're changing something?
First Deputy?
First Deputy. Instead of First Deputy Protonator, it'd be First Deputy Clerk of Courts.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 11 with the change of, instead of First Deputy Protonator, to First Deputy Clerk of Courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 12.
Make a motion to approve item number 12 with Kristi Morick to the open position of First Deputy Protonator.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 12 with the following change. Instead of Second Deputy Clerk of Courts, it should be First Deputy Protonator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 13 on the agenda. To approve the appointment of Lana Adams as Deputy to open position of Chief Clerk at a salary of $62,500, affecting November 7. Questions or comments?
Is that when she starts working or is she working now?
No, that's when she starts working.
November 7? So she's going to be working harder than all three of you?
No, that's all. She has to take care of the three of us, so I would imagine. All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 14 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 14 on the agenda. To ratify, acknowledge, determination of Joan Berman with her recommendation of Clerk of Courts Protonator Jones. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 15.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To ratify and acknowledge the nomination of Brittany Carter of Siskiyou Position of Domestic Relations and Takeoffs. Effective September 22. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16.
Make a motion to approve item number 16 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 16 on the agenda. To assign Jean Conklin, Jeanie Conklin, Human Resources Director, Deputy Chief Clerk. The authority to use factual signatures for any and all of the three commissioners by ink stamp in lieu of personal maiden signatures on county checks as well as the testation ability in lieu of the Chief Clerk or Deputy Chief Clerk's signature on the county documents. Provided such authorities given and exercise under the direction of each commissioner. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 17.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 17 on the...
Sorry. Can I amend that? It should be domestic violence awareness law.
I was wondering what kind of violence it was.
Okay. Now, you agree with the amendment?
I do.
Okay. Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 17 to adopt proclamation 2016-15 as domestic violence awareness law. Questions or comments?
Do you have a copy of that proclamation?
Yes.
And can we see it? Is it on the desk?
It's on the desk, and once it's signed, it'll be available to the public.
And can you read it?
No, I'm not going to read it at this time. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
18.
I make a motion to approve item number 18 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 18 on the agenda. To adopt proclamation 2016-16 proclaiming the week of October 2nd through the 8th as mental illness awareness week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
19.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 19 on the agenda. To adopt resolution 2016-14, resolution to authorize the filing of an application for the 2016 Pennsylvania Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program Funds. Questions or comments?
Can we have any explanation on what that program is and what they're planning to do this year?
Bobby Joe, you want to explain that?
Sure. The Community Development Block Grant is an entitlement grant to the county, gets each year. It's to benefit low-income communities. A project has to either be in a low-income community or be on a low-income street. We solicit projects from the municipalities each year. And this year, we will be assisting Thompson Borough, who's a low-income community, with some sidewalk improvements along Jackson Street and Main Street. New Milford Borough with some storm sewer improvements on James and Tewahana Streets. We'll be assisting the County Career Technologies Center with an adult education class for unemployed workers in carpentry to get them back into the workforce. And we'll also be continuing the county's housing rehabilitation to assist low-income homeowners with home repairs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 20.
Make a motion to approve item number 20 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 20 on the agenda. Adopt resolution 2016-15, resolution for fair housing. Questions or comments?
Have you had that resolution before?
Yes, it goes along with 19. In order to have 19, you have to do 20, 21, and 22.
And so fair housing, in what way? What are the...
Just means that you're going to not discriminate and have fair housing. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 21.
Make a motion to approve item number 21 as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Item 21, motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 21 to adopt resolution 2016-16, Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan. Questions or comments?
But that, can you explain that one? That sounds like a new one. Is that new?
No, it's the same thing. Basically, what it says is if somebody gets displaced during the housing projects, they'll find other locations for them and help them get settled.
During what housing projects? When they're building or repairing?
Any of the stuff that the housing authority is doing.
As part of that Community Development Block Grant, if we were to do. We're not doing any type of projects to displace people, but if we were, we say that we would relocate them.
Relocate them and help them out? Assistance plan?
About how much money is that from the cost? Of 19, 20, 21, and 22?
For the county, zero.
Okay.
And how much money are they using for programs like this?
I think they averaged, my was, at $300 and some this time.
About $236 this time.
$236,000.
That's for the whole program or just for...
Yes, the entire town either.
Because for the entire...
It's all past due money.
And it's coming from the state?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 22.
Make a motion to approve with the correction the resolution 2016-17. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. To approve item 22 on the agenda. To adopt resolution 2016-17, County Siskiyou Minority Business Enterprise Plan and Statement of Goals. Questions or comments?
And what do they consider minority?
A minority-owned business is anybody that is owned by a minority. I'm not exactly sure of the definition of that. There is a listing. Department of Labor and Industry, I believe, provides that listing of those that qualify. So we're just stating that we attempt to let them know of any bid opportunities, minority or women-owned businesses each year.
So minority or women. So it could be like African-Americans because we hardly have any in our county?
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Public comment? Anybody here?
Yes, hi. The last two meetings I was here, I asked if the public comment would then have something written about anyone who had spoke at the meeting. And the last two meetings, whom I shot down, no. Since then, I have sent emails to Commissioner Warner and Commissioner Arnold because you made it very clear, no. You didn't explain why you didn't want anything written. And I understand there might be a reconsideration of that.
If you look at the minutes, you'll see it in there.
So I want to thank for that, for that to be done and added. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to say something in addition to that. I'm looking at the last page, which says Public Comment Summary. And basically, all you're saying is that there was a comment on meeting times? Comment on public comment about bullet points? On proposed incinerator? So that's what you're talking about as far as explaining? Did you see the last page? This is how they write it up? Can you give any more details than that? That this is so far what you're venturing to do into this new area?
This is what we have at this time.
And when it says comment on proposed incinerator, we had several comments. Can you say at least comments?
What is recorded is what we're doing at this time.
Well, I'd like some accuracy because not, comment means one comment, not several comments.
Any other comments? No other public comments?
Yes.
How much pushback has the county been getting on this? I'm due to the county to move here recently.
Yeah, there's, you know, there is definitely a movement of people that are totally against the incinerator, and we're well aware of that.
How many people are for it?
I can't tell you how many are for it and how many are against it.
Have you heard of anybody who's actually for it? Other than the person selling the land?
No, there's been several people that have commented that they don't have an issue with it and that they're for it. Of course, again, I don't know how anybody can comment if they don't know exactly what's going on, so.
Right, which was something I was getting to my next question. Have we heard anything more from pilot?
The last release came out. They did a public release last week. It's on our webpage now. Apparently, now they're using a public relations group or a media group to release stuff. So basically, again, it doesn't tell us anything more than what some of the things they're not going to do. But they don't tell us anything of what they are going to do.
Yeah, that's problematic. Sorry, thank you.
They are admitting that it's a hazardous waste facility, don't they?
Well, it depends on which article you read from them.
So what about that?
Sometimes they call it an industrial waste processing center. Then they call it an industrial waste incinerator. Then they call it a hazardous waste incinerator. Then they go back to an industrial waste incinerator, so.
So we, so at least we know it said, from all the words they've used, it's a hazardous industrial incinerator. We know that. That's what they're proposing. We just don't know what they're going to burn.
Well, that's true.
They're saying what they're not going to burn.
Right.
Right, so we don't know what they're going to burn at this point.
Right, kind of overstepped everything else.
Right.
Have they purchased the land already?
No, they have not purchased it.
So they haven't closed on the property?
Yeah. So he's talking, he's got the court to stop him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so no closing on the property as of yet. So I'm just getting into this, so, you know, I apologize for my lack of knowledge on a lot of the...
That's fine. That's fine.
But what is the county doing for the voice of the people?
Well, we're working with the agency that has a control over this, which is the Department of Environmental Protection. We actually had a conference call with them earlier last week, or this week, I can't remember, it's all blending together, and talked to the people at DEP to find out, you know, what the stages are and what's going on. And basically, we'll have a release probably this week on that. And actually, I think there was an email we got. I think it was yesterday that we got that will get posted today from them, telling us, you know, what's going on. So basically, what it basically says, nothing's going on, that they're still waiting to make a, waiting for the company to make any final determination as they're moving forward or not.
How do we fight this?
Well, you think, you know, that what you need to do is continue to look at the process. You need to be ready to communicate with DEP and look at the regulations and see what can be done with the regulations.
With their regulations or with the county's?
DEP's regulations.
DEP's regulations. All right, thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes.
I understand that New Milford's listener, as well as Joyner Jaeger, say that the Class 6 community can have their own ordinance as strong as the DEP?
You know, people can say whatever they want, you know. And like I said before, you know, we sent stuff to DEP. We got answers back that said we couldn't do it. I'm now waiting for additional information back from DEP. As soon as I get that information, we'll post it.
All right. Can we have Jean Greco talk with the two attorneys and make sure this is all correct?
Well, our attorney is working with DEP.
Can he also work with Jaeger and New Milford? At least talk to them?
Well, they're aware of what's going on. I mean, they all talk amongst themselves. Any other public comment? Yes.
Can we talk a little bit about the ongoing renovations at the courthouse?
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit about what is happening right now?
Well, besides a lot of demo work and demolition, what is going on is there's a second floor getting put in the gymnasium area, which will allow for the top floor to be for the assessment office, which is currently, we're renting space from the bank. They'll move back up there and they'll have good space up there. Upstairs will also be the historical records. So that'll come out of the basement and go back upstairs. The first floor will house the treasure tax plane. And they'll be in that area. There'll also be a lunchroom in there, which is bigger than the shoebox that we have right now. The, and that takes care of that area. The current area where the treasurer is will be reconditioned, and that'll be set up for the district magistrate so we can get him out of the old jail.
Didn't we just remodel the treasure and all this stuff?
The only thing we did was just go in and paint and put carpet down. Actually, the carpet comes out and we reused the carpet. So that was the nice thing about going to the carpet that we're using that you see on the floor. It's all square, so alls we do is pick it up, move it to another spot. And that way, we don't throw it away. So that, the magistrate will go in there.[1628.94] the magistrate will go in there. On the side of the building, that's extending out about 30 to 40 feet. There'll be a new entrance there, which will allow handicap accessibility. There'll be two conference rooms on the bottom floor. The top floor will be a new area for the district attorney's office and a conference room. The, and the big thing, the whole purpose of all of this, is there will be an elevator placed in there that will head nine different floors so that we become compliant with ADA rules and regulations so people that are handicapped can get to the different levels of our building.
So every area of the building will be then?
Handicap accessible, except for the third floor.
And what will be on the third floor?
Third floor is just our IT department.
You're saying you have nine floors?
There's nine floors between the, all the three, between the two different buildings out there.
Oh, you're counting two different buildings, not just?
Well, if you look at where the sheriff's office is, that building is a separate building. That used to be the old, many, 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 many moons ago, used to be the fire station. And then you have the Warner Building, which used to be the school. There's nine different levels of floors between those two buildings.
Well, you sound like a New York City skyscraper at this point.
Nine floors is, most of them are about a foot or two foot apart.
That's it?
So remember that the building is only two stories tall.
That's what it looks like, yeah. So you have three sections. Is that what you're saying? At least three sections to this building?
Well, you have the courthouse, then you have the, the old fire station, then you have the old school.
Now, that used to be the old academy, Montrose Academy, when you called the Warner Building?
I'm not sure exactly what they called that. I know it was the old, it was the name blacked out to the Warren, Warren whatever.
That's from like the 1800s, right?
Yeah, I would think so, yes.
Mid 1800s or so?
Which has posed a lot of issues with the construction because of what we find when we start tearing into things. Something that should be, it's always easier to build something new. It's horrible when you have to try and renovate and try to bring things up to code because they didn't have codes back then when they built things. And now in order to do it, you have to maintain codes.
So then, is there any plan in place or being looked at for the old jail?
Well, that'll be the next thing. Once we can get it vacated, you know, and I'm glad you bring that up. Because again, you know, the thing that is the most irritating is when people run their mouths about things and they have no idea what they're talking about. And, you know, I read a report from the Montrose Borough President that says that, that I convinced the other two commissioners that it's going to cost millions to repair it, and he's worried we're going to rip it down in the middle of the. Here's the engineering report right here that we had done on the jail. It's $750,000 to fix the retaining wall and the play yard. And that's it. And an eye beam inside. $750,000. Now, that doesn't take in the fact that the main wall inside the jail, in the lower part, where the cells were, it's all laid up stone and it's pushing in and failing. That's the same wall that holds all the dirt up and stops the rosmop from falling into the jail. So the big issue is, how do we stake and drive pilings in the ground to take and stabilize the earth so we can take, because the only way to fix light up stone is to tear it back down and relay it back up. So the engineers are puzzled trying to figure out how they can figure out a design that will work to stop the rosmop from falling into the jail if we try to fix it. So the real issue is, is, you know, that will cost mega bucks to do. That doesn't include the fact that we have asbestos, lead paint, raw sewage running through an open trench in the basement, pigeon poop all over everything. All that is all hazardous that has to be taken into care of, let alone that none of the doorways meet code. So that if you do try to renovate it, you've got to go in and make it all code. And of course, a lot of those walls are two foot, three foot thick that you have to cut through to make the doorways wider. And now the building shifted enough that half the doorways in the basement, you can't open because all the stones have shifted. So when I say it's going to cost millions, it's going to cost millions. The facts are here to prove it. I've done enough commercial buildings and renovated enough commercial buildings. I know the cost. Unlike somebody at your house where you can pay somebody to come in and, and get a Kmart price hopefully to take and do something at your house, we have to pay prevailing wage. And when you pay prevailing wage, you're paying the big bucks. And so it adds another 30 to 40 percent on top of it. So the question will come back. It's not a decision the commissioners are going to make. It's a decision we're going to take and get it engineered and find out what it's going to cost to make it viable. And when it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars, then hopefully the public will chirp in and say, yeah, spend, you know, a whole bunch of my tax money to fix that or do something different. But on the other hand, if Montrose Borough wants to make comments and they love the place that much, if I can find a way to get around the deed, I'd be more than glad to make a motion to donate it to Montrose Borough. They could have it.
And what was their comment actually, Montrose Borough?
Well, their comment reads that President Graham said Christian Allen Hall, Betsy Arnold, and Mary Ann Warren said that Christian Allen Hall has Betsy Arnold and Mary Ann Warren convinced it would cost millions to repair it. So again, you know, when you don't know what you're talking about, you don't know what you're talking about. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Has, have the commissioners gotten any response from that DEP letter that you sent requesting the air testing prior to any development?
We have not got, I will tell you this. We have not gotten anything specific to that letter. We didn't, like I said, get a communication yesterday. But I would be glad to meet with you after and talk to you about a couple of other things on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Yes?
Well, he wants to talk. Let him talk. He hasn't talked yet.
Are you running me or am I running you?
No, I'm just, well, because I saw him.
Let me run the meeting. You know how it works here. Let me run the meeting.
I understand, but I'm trying to help you because you don't make as much money.
I don't need your help, believe me.
You don't make as much money as a chief clerk, so I'm trying to give you help.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, but I really want me to help.
Yeah, this way, he hasn't spoken.
I give a letter with a law that Mary Ann Warren, the last meeting when you wasn't here quite a while ago.
Yes.
Did she agree to the law?
Yes, we, we, we agreed the law that went to assessment.
That law is supposed to be, the tax collector should know that's law is there. And when you have a problem, you should take it to him and you should send a written thing right in. He didn't know nothing about it. And he passed away now. So we got another tax collector and I give it to her when I pay my taxes. Now, you guys want me to pay 480 some dollars for the mistake that you made. You can't go down there and get, you and Mrs. Arnold, and go down there and get an itemized list. You don't have an itemized list. You can't take a hat down there and pick a number out of the hat and put it on the assessment, on have people pay it. Now, you sit there at the appeals thing, you didn't say a word, and Mr. Button said, give us all the figures. And then here's another thing. Down in the assessment office, they got a figure of 105,500. Up in the payment office, they got a figure of 106,600. Now, they're in the same building. They should talk to each other once in a while. Now, this has been going on for two years and all he gets are run around and lies and more lies. You ain't got no answer for that?
Well, if you're done, I'll answer.
Go ahead, answer.
All right. Well, first of all, the process is, is if you don't want your taxes, to go to the appeals court.
We did.
And you did. And you were denied. And you were denied.
No, it wasn't denied.
You got to let me talk or you're going to keep talking?
No, every time you do something wrong, I'll interrupt you.
Well, then we're done. Anybody else kind of called the comment?
I know you can't answer my questions. That proves it right there.
I wanted to ask also that has the county solicitor, is he in contact with the new Milford supervisors discussing a possible air ordinance that the county can do or the municipality can do? Is he in contact with the supervisors?
Our solicitor with their supervisors? Absolutely not.
They're not, they're not in contact?
Well, our solicitor shouldn't be talking to their supervisor.
Okay, how about, is he in contact?
So he has had conversations with their solicitor.
With their solicitor, Mr. Greco?
Okay, and again, if you're going to talk, I'm not going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand you. Go ahead, go ahead. You got the floor.
Are you done now?
I'm done.
Okay. So the issue is, is there's been a conversation. Right now, we are waiting to see. The attorney for the township is working on something and working with people. We're waiting to see what comes out of that before any next move is made.
And I also, thank you. And I also wanted to ask about the proclamation on Hunger Action Month. I'd like to know more about it. And it would be nice to read it because what I'm reading here is that it says September is Hunger Action Month, and hunger is an issue of grave concern in our county. And also, it says that more, almost 5,000 individuals struggle with hunger in our county. And that we, they have distributed, the regional food bank has distributed 7.5 million pounds of food just in 2015 through pantries, several food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, other community organizations. And I also know churches. A lot of churches are feeding people every week in our county. So there's, now they want to let us know that September 16th is Thunder for Hunger Day. So that's a special day, food drive to gather donations for our county residents. So I want people to know that hunger is a serious issue in this county. It hasn't improved. I'd like to hear from also Mary Ann Warren when I'm done. This situation doesn't look like it has improved over the past eight years, even though we've had intensive gas drilling, also all these royalties supposedly that have been paid out, and lease fees. All this money supposedly that's floating around the county, and we still have a grave hunger issue in this county, as well as it says in Pennsylvania. So I want people to know that, that the gas drilling did not solve the hunger issues, the poverty issues in our county. So I'd like to know from Mary Ann, has the situation gotten any better as far as hunger, or is it basically similar for the past eight years? So now we're, because we're talking about this Hunger Day, Thunder for Hunger Day coming up on September 16th. Can you give us some idea?
Vera, that's already passed, September 16th. Today's what, the 20?
Okay, all right, it's passed already. You're right. It passed, but then.
That was actually the last meeting. Unfortunately, the numbers have maintained, you know, steadily at that number. I don't know what you mean by, you know, royalty money and gas money coming in and changing.
So we're still basically the same, as hunger levels, poverty levels, from what we can see?
Yes. I mean, people in boroughs aren't getting royalty monies or, you know, any gas lease money. And it's usually people in boroughs that are struggling.
And there's still a lot of people unemployed?
Still unemployed. And then I'm just curious, since this September 16th thing passed, why are we getting it now?
No, you asked about the proclamation that was passed on the 14th, and I got you a copy of it.
Oh, is that what that is? I thought it was for today. Oh, okay. I thought this was coming out today.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was from last, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Any other public comment? All right, public comment is over. Before we adjourn, just a couple of things. Last night, as I, at 10 o'clock last night, I was continuing to still work on county business. It came to me that, you know, something's got to change. So, you know, when we talk about the issues in the county and the nonsense that we deal with, you know, it doesn't matter. Sometimes it's one level or the other, whether you want to talk at the federal level, that the nonsense going on there, of course, with the presidential election and that stuff, or whether it's through the immigration system that just gave hundreds of people that were supposed to be deported back to other countries that were on a real bad list, good citizenship and let them, let them go. And we're wondering where all those are, or if we're wondering about whether, you know, these supposedly terrorist camps that are northeast of our county, you know, what's going on there, or at the state level. Yesterday, I was at Harrisburg on the minimum royalties bill because we've got some operators that are basically thick as thieves, taking all the deductions away from the people and, and taking their money and giving them zero checks for their royalties, if not negative checks. And it's not all of them, you know, there's some good ones there, but there is some bad ones there. So again, as I spent the, you know, hours down there, meeting with senators and House representatives and discussing the issues and, and then driving back, you know, then we have to deal with, with the county issues, you know. And, and some of those issues are beyond our control. You know, we have to deal with pass through money that, that we got for the housing authority here, going to do the housing projects in the, in the borough of Forest City. And it was supposed to be passed through, not cost us anything. Well, mistake was made, and now we're short $500,000. And now they, they're asking the commissioners to cough up $350,000 of taxpayers' money to, to fix that mistake. Or, or it's the, the other housing group that's on the other end of town, the Tiffany Pines area, that comes in and says, gee, you know, our investors aren't happy. It costs us more money to buy the land and build the project we thought, and we're not making enough money. So gee, we want, we want a taxpayer. We want the taxpayers to pay our share, and we want to pay a lot less. Or the municipality that comes forward and says, listen, you know, you guys got Act 13 money? We'd like to have it to put our sidewalks in and do things. And then when we ask, well, what are you doing with your Act 13 money? And they respond and say, oh, well, we're saving ours. We don't want to use ours. You know, the nonsense goes on. And then when you get to the courthouse itself, trying to deal with the, all the issues at the courthouse, listen, for many, many years, there was nothing done to these facilities, and they were falling down. The engineers and contractors still can't figure out why the front of this building isn't sitting in public ab right now. All the timbers in the attic were pulled apart. Nothing was holding it together, except for some silicone on the bottom of the pillars that were there because they weren't even touching the base. So nobody could figure out why that wasn't out in, in the parking lot or out in the main street. And it goes on to the project we have now, and the nonsense that we do with that, finding things that should have been done the right way that are not done the right way. And then we talked about the code issues, trying to comply with that. We have a fire escape sitting out here that's falling off the building. That's the one that poor Judge Siemens fell through many years ago. And luckily, he had his arms out and that stopped him from going all the way to the ground. Well, it's fallen down. Needs to get replaced. But here's the dilemma. To replace it, we now have to make it code. To make it code, that changes everything. That means we've got to go into the courtroom, take pews out of the courtroom, make changes in the courtroom, do something different to get to the third story or vacate the third story. The costs are astronomical. The issues are astronomical. The problems are huge. So it's trying to deal with all that nonsense on top of everything else. And then we talk about the incinerator. But you know, the people that, you know, when people sit out in the public and they say, oh, I don't know, you know, he, he invited them here. Listen, I didn't invite anybody here. The people that invited these people here, the people that went out and said, you know what? I want the bag of gold. I'll lease my land. I'll sell my rights. I want the bag of gold. I want the royalties. Nobody ever thinks what's going to happen when we make an action. Nobody thinks about that decision, where it's going to lead in five years. So in 2007, 2008, when this all started, and these landmen started running around town and promising the world to people, people just saw the bag of money. They didn't care what was going to happen in five years. They didn't even think about, gee, could this bring a possible incinerator in? No, couldn't have cared less. Everybody cared about the bag of gold. Well, five years later, and of course, in this process, you know, we were fortunate enough to get invited to go to some other states that went through this process. Mary Ann Warren, what? Saw what happens when the gas industry comes and when they leave. But for every action, there's a reaction. So the action of, I want to get rich quick, give me the bag of gold, that brings things that maybe you don't want. And then the action is saying, listen, we don't want any pipelines. We don't want to cut down any trees. We don't want to do this. Well, that sounds great today. So let's do that. What action does that bring? Reaction does that bring? That brings a reaction. Now they want to bring hundreds of trucks in here and truck with the gas out of here. We've got to stop panicking and thinking about today and start thinking about five and 10 years down the road. That's what nobody wants to do. Everybody wants to get rich today. And that's the problem. Greed is what's caused this problem, and greed is what's going to destroy it. So with that said, listen, I've got more work to do that I can handle. I've got a grant sitting on my desk for $20,000 that we'll lose if I can't get enough time to work on. On top of a 911 center that a month ago was shut down because we had a failure in, in the electronics. Now, this electronics is stuff that's outdated and they don't even make it anymore. So we've been working on a plan for three years, trying to get a new 911 center going. We are at a critical stage. And maybe it doesn't seem important enough to you today, but by God, it'll seem important to you when you dial 911 and you can't get anybody. Now, there's a lot of work that has to be done there. The grant money alone, it's an eight, nine million dollar project. And the deal is to get the grant money to fund most of it, if not a good portion of it. But it takes time to do that. And it takes people to be able to sit down and do those grants and do that work. So, you know, with that all said, listen, I, I think we need to start doing what some of the other counties do now. I think the chairmanship should get moved around. So with that, I'll make a motion that I step down as the chair so I can work on this other stuff, that the vice chair takes over, and, and we rotate it around.
That was your motion?
That sounds good.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
This is the first I've heard of it.
Well, like I said, I was on the block last night is when I came in.
Wasn't the meeting adjourned?
No. And then public comment, that was it.
That's, that sounds like a good idea, Alan. I like all your comments and your concerns. And to, to move around the chair is a great idea. We'd like to see that spread around. And this way, you don't have the full responsibility. And I'd like to know from Mary Ann, what state did you visit that there was a?
Well, we have a motion on the court, so.
Oh, okay.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so carry.
Wait a minute.
I'd like to make a motion that Alan be the vice chair.
Wait, you don't have an agreement, do you?
Yeah, two said yes.
Two said yes?
It's Peter.
So who's, who didn't say yes?
So at this point, as I said before, public comment is over. I will now entertain the motion to adjourn. I'll make motion to adjourn.
What about?
We have public comment. Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Excuse me, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that you be the vice chair.
Do you have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I have motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:47. Thank you.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Oops.